You're just in time, we're doing a roll call. Alright, everybody is here except Lisa Mesmer is not going to make it because of a work trip she had to take. Okay, can I get an approval for the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we have recognition of students Melville NEA, Deanna.
Hello, I'm Deanna McKelvey, I'm president of Melville NEA and tonight we have two awards. Unfortunately, one of our recipients is absent, but I'm gonna tell you a little about that person anyway. And then we also have, the other one is here. So I'll start with David Ayala, who is a student at Scope and his teacher, Mr. Cross, said that he has hit all of his goals and that he has actually finished the program and he's graduated, which is probably a big reason why he's not here tonight. I don't think he got my email, so. And then we also have Nora Manzella and she's here from Oakville Elementary with her teacher, so if they could make their way to the podium. And I'm gonna let her, her teacher tell you about why she won this award today.
Hi, I'm Bridgette Wrights, I'm a first grade teacher at Oakville Elementary and this is Nora. I nominated Nora because she always does the right thing even when she thinks no one is looking. Nora goes above and beyond to help a friend in need, whether it is talking to a peer who needs a listening ear, helping a friend just clean up her snack, or giving words of praise to a student that's having a tough day. Nora makes it a point to be a friend to everyone and give them a welcoming smile. She's an amazing person and I cannot wait to see what she does throughout the rest of her life. Nora Manzella.
Dr. Kenoey, would you like to?
going to talk about STEM Club and if our STEM Club members could also come forward.
Hi, I'm Julia St. Louis, I'm a first grade teacher at Rogers Elementary and I'm the facilitator of our STEM Club. So today with me I have students from our grades three through five STEM Club and they are here to talk to you about their project-based learning project that you might have had a chance to see when you started.
I'm Rose Anne.
I'm Michaela.
For our STEM project, we went to start a recycling program at our school.
This would be good for Rogers because we can teach the importance of recycling, plus kids can recycle at school. Then they will, can go home and start recycling as well. Also, we hope other schools will follow our example.
To make our project happen, we have met with Nurse Neff, Dr. Kenoey, Ms. St. Louis, and Mrs. Gag to get this project started.
Our next steps are to make a video about the importance of recycling. What can be recycled and what happens to plastic when it is thrown out. The video will be shown at our school.
Because of this project, we know more about what can happen to the earth if we don't recycle. We can, we also learned how to talk to adults about how to solve problems, how to solve problems we see and to help our planet.
Hello, I'm Kaylee and this is Jayden. For our STEM Club project, we worked on a project about recycling, especially how to design the cafeteria so that recycle bins stand out and will encourage our classmates to recycle.
After we figured out what we wanted to do for our project, we gathered supplies to build a model of the cafeteria so the kids would know where to recycle.
During this project, we had help from, from some Oakville High School kids who came over to our Rod, to Rogers to help us brainstorm and, and solve problems.
For this project, from this project, we learned how to work together as a team and realized that recycling helps the planet.
Good evening, we have two recognitions tonight. The first one is one of our teachers, Mrs. Suzie Burley, if you could please come up. We're recognizing Mrs. Burley. She was recognized as the St. Louis District Health and Physical Education Teacher of the Year. Then she went on to be honored at the state as the state Missouri Elementary and PE Teacher of the Year. So it's quite an honor. Not only does Suzie have engaging and innovative PE activities at our school, she also presented at the conference several sessions. I was asked, actually asked to come back on Sunday and do another session, so great sessions, I was able to go to the banquet and part of the conference. She also leads our, she's one of our co-program directors for our homeworks at our school and so much more. So congratulations to Mrs. Burley. Alright, and I'd like for our Jaguar Kids Club to come on up. This is our first year having a Jaguar Kids Club and so they're gonna tell you a little bit about their club.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Polesing, I'm a social-emotional learning interventionist and co-sponsor of the Jaguar Kids Club at Beasley Elementary. Our after-school club meets once a month and is open to all students, grades kindergarten through fifth grade. And we focus on teaching social skills and emotional regulation strategies.
Hi, my name is Yvette Pelican and I'm an SSD social worker and one of the co-sponsors for Jaguar Kids. And we have 23 wonderful students who are, who participate in our club and here are a couple of them and they're gonna tell you about some activities that we do in Jaguar Kids.
Hi, I am Alcia and I'm in kindergarten. We play fun games to work on our social skills.
Hi, I'm Aleah and I'm in first grade. We practice relaxation and mindfulness.
Hi, my name is Ashton and I'm in second grade. We learn ways to help keep us calm like deep breathing.
Hi, I'm Dominique and I'm in third grade. We take time to think about gratitude and the people who support us.
Hi, I'm Jamal, I'm in fifth grade. We learn coping skills to do at home and school.
Hi, I'm Terrence and I'm in first grade and I like, I'm in Jaguar's kid club and I like the snow and meltdown.
Alright, for patron comments, we did not have anybody sign up. I'll take a second here, so as everybody knows, hopefully we have signup going on right now for Board of Education positions. So far, we have five people who have signed up. This is in order on the ballot. Number one is Jean Pretto, two is Stacy Kenner, three is Richard Wagan, four is Jeff Wolman, and five is Peggy Hassler. So these are, sure, sure, sounds good. We'll start over then, this is Jean. Is Stacy Kenner here? Stacy, right there. Richard Wagan, in the back. Jeff Wolman, right there. And Peggy Hassler, right here. No problem, thank you. Okay, and then we are to standing committee reports. What did we have since the last meeting?
We just had finals and I think everybody did great. It was kinda stressful, but I think everybody made through it and I heard that overall that we, everybody did good.
Good news, thank you.
And we did not have policy meetings tonight because Dr. Gaines is at a conference and I did attend Tuesday night. I went to the STEAM night at Oakville Middle School, which was a collaborative effort of all of the middle schools and they had, the whole gym was filled with random things. They had lots of PLTW class representation from the high schools, so a lot of the high school kids were there demonstrating for the littler kids, it was really pretty cool. I learned a lot myself. We had robotics and construction geometry, which is a new class, and there was, Lou was there with some flight stimulators, simulator stimulators? Simulators, sorry about that. Wash U was there representing the health end of it with, Melville had their Hosa Club there. And they had arts and they were making t-shirts and it was, there was a really good turnout for the first time that they held the event, so they're hoping for next year to be bigger and better.
Okay, so at Oakville, for our winter dance, I've sort of implemented a new way of how we're going to do our court. So normally we just have whoever wants to be on court, they post a picture and they use a hashtag and then whoever has the most likes gets to be crowned king and queen. But that doesn't really like help insert anything towards the school or, you know, kinda implement more morale or school spirit. So we're going to do this new idea, it's called Spirit Couple, and you can run with whoever you want, like your best friend, you can run with your boyfriend, do whatever you want. And you basically will dress up for all the spirit days and take a picture and send it to one of our teachers, they'll make a Google form and all the kids will fill it out. I'm just super excited for it, it's next week. And we planned really easy spirit days, like Hawaiian Day, 'cause what dad doesn't have a Hawaiian shirt you can wear. We're all just really excited, 'cause, I don't know, it does feel fun to actually see everybody all excited to be at school. And then we had our character ed visit this month to showcase some of our school stuff. In our application, we talked about our AMP seminars, which aren't always our favorite, but that's probably just 'cause I was taking ACT math prep. But there's a lot of new initiatives in there that allow students to kinda buy into the whole idea and we get to like select a bunch of different courses that wouldn't even normally be offered, like there's an origami class, that's just like something that, like kids are really interested in and there's just so many options. And then we also, we had an Acts a Day of service where basically a bunch of club leaders came and helped, I wouldn't say we like helped redo the school, we did light painting and mulching. And we wrote that down in our application as well as we had just a bunch of remodelifications to our front lobby area, that's just really new and exciting. We'll hear back and find out if we won or received the characterization merit and then we'll be applying for the National School of Character as well.
Thank you.
Two things, I'm working with a group of four school boards here in the St. Louis area, we're looking at the feasibility of establishing an early childhood district, much like special school district in terms of funding and trying to shore up some of the deficiencies in some of the districts and some of the areas to improve early childhood. Second thing is, on February 10th, MSBA will have their legislative forum in Jefferson City where we have a chance to sit down with our legislators in their offices and talk to them about the issues we think that are important. Found out today, I've been invited to do a presentation on advocacy. I hope they give me an hour, 'cause I'd like to talk about that long, but they said five minutes, so. For me, you know, that's a challenge, but I'm just gonna talk about the type of numbers and type of things we look at when we go ahead and sit down and talk with a legislator and tell them what's important.
Anyone else? Okay. We are up to action items by consent.
I'd like to have 5A removed.
5A removed, okay. Any others? Okay, a motion to approve 5B through 5F.
So moved.
Second.
All approved? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. 5A, minutes.
I just need to abstain, I wasn't here for that meeting.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve 5A? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining?
Abstaining.
Six or one. Okay. Student achievement. I did not update this, so I think Rogers is first. Okay. Sorry, I got my own cheat sheet and I missed that part. That's good.
Let me just practice Dr. Smith with the clicker before you get started. Okay. So, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Patrice Matzip notes that "Education is at the heart of achieving your dreams. At Rogers, I believe we are a house of wisdom where dreams begin and doors are open to all possibilities." In order to let you know why I believe this about Rogers, I would like to share with you our story, the Rogers family story. Our family, like any family, has its successes, its challenges, and the wonderful chance to look at those challenges as opportunities for growth. In our Rogers story, I will talk with you about our school, our academics, our work with social-emotional learning, our engagement with the community, and our journey forward. Insofar as some of the demographic data about Rogers, during my tenure at Rogers, we have moved from being one of the smaller elementary schools in the district in terms of scholar population to being one of the largest. While we continue to be one of the larger elementary schools, our demographic figures and overall enrollment are beginning to flatten out. With the exception of fourth grade, we have three sections of each grade level. Currently, fourth grade is the only grade at our school with four sections. We have had four sections for this cohort of scholars since they were in second grade. Now that you know a bit about our school, our score, our story now turns to scholar Reading is fundamental to the learning process. It is the foundation upon which all other learning is based. Every day, our scholars work with either their classroom teacher or reading interventionist to receive daily reading instruction. As an extra support, we do have two reading specialists who work with our scholars every day. Furthermore, reading also provides us with a data point that is collected on a regular basis. Here we can see scholar reading levels at each grade from quarter one to quarter two. In mathematics, this year we started using eye-ready to measure learning and as you can see, we have been making gains in scholars being on grade level since the beginning of the school year. Looking at MAP data, we do have areas to celebrate. We do celebrate that in both ELA and math, every grade level scored higher than the state average in terms of the percent of scholars being proficient or advanced on the MAP test. At the same time, we also have areas to examine and problem solve, for this exact data shows a decrease with our cohort scores. As a school community, we are descending into the particulars of our data to determine the cause of our cohort scores. This data has been a focus of ongoing discussion and has led to an examination of what we are doing and what we can do to serve the needs of our scholars. To aid us in math, for example, we are working on using results from our eye-ready assessments to determine the areas of learner, learner need and to provide targeted instruction at those levels. Additionally, in ELA, for example, we are digging into the MAP data to develop action plans to bring about higher levels of achievement. For instance, in writing, particularly the rereading, revising, and editing draft standard, our action plan consists of using grade level meeting time to learn from teachers at college about affective practices for teaching that particular standard and then implementing those practices in the classroom and measuring the progress of learning. While academics is important to us at Rogers, as equally important is the social-emotional learning of our young people and thus another chapter in our story. To help our scholars be in a mindset for learning, we have worked with diligence to help our scholars manage their emotions as well as to decrease stress and anxiety levels. We take measures of emotional regulation and self-management using a data collection tool known as Panorama. Here you have seen the percent of favorable responses in these areas. This allows us to see where our learners are in these areas and then develop lessons to meet the needs of our kids. Through the hard work of our counselor and teaching staff, each learning space is equipped with a calm corner where scholars can go to get in a proper mindset for learning. At Rogers, we have also done a lot of work examining the use of space to increase collaboration and to create a classroom environment that promotes innovation and teamwork, yet at the same time has areas for quiet in order to think and reflect. All of this work in the classroom leads us to the next chapter in the Rogers story, which is Rogers and the community. Our school has certainly benefited from the community with picnic tables at the school for all to enjoy, a lending library that is available to all, as well as our partnership with Millipore Sigma. While we have benefited from the community, we also strive to be a benefit to the community by working with veteran associations and partnering with the local retirement community to meet fellow members of our region. These are a few of the many examples we do to be involved in the community. We want our scholars to know the world is a big place, they are a part of it, and we have a responsibility to be of service to the entire community. Our story does not end here, however, because the work never stops at Rogers. Tonight, while we have had the chance to learn about our school, to hear about our academic data, our work with social-emotional learning, and our engagement with the community, I would like to move on to the final chapter of this book, but also the beginning of a new book, a new story, and that is our journey forward. The relentless pursuit of greatness, the quest for excellence, is our melding of this final chapter and the beginning of our new story. Through the continuous improvement process of questioning is what we want our scholars to know, how will we know if they know it, how will they respond if they don't know it, and how will we respond if they do know it, are the guideposts that serve us on our journey towards reaching the goals outlined in our strategic plan, school improvement plan, and our portrait of a graduate. Because in the end, we want each child at Rogers to leave being a joyful learner, on the path to becoming the best version of themselves, so they can achieve their dreams and have the knowledge and skills so they can, as Archimedes said, "Give me a lever and I will move the earth." Before concluding, I must commend the hard work and commitment of so many of the Rogers faculty and staff. I must also recognize our parents who are so generous in providing for us. Additionally, thank you to the children of Rogers who are absolutely wonderful. I am blessed to be able to work with each of these young people each day. This is our story. Thank you Board of Education for providing us many opportunities at Rogers. I am grateful for all that you do. Thank you.
Thanks. That was really good. Can you possibly do like an audible for this book so that we could listen to? That was pretty impressive.
I'd be happy to do so. And I do think many components of that book are things that we are looking at at Rogers Elementary School. I think our STEM Club that you, that you were, just had the opportunity to meet goes along with many of the ideas proposed in what schools could be. And so I do feel that it's been a wonderful opportunity for us this year to read this book together. And yes, I am facilitating this book study with the elementary principals and I can never get Andrea Dean to stop talking when the book is being discussed, 'cause she just keeps talking about it so much.
Well, as long as we're taking pot shots. When I woke up Sunday morning, I opened up my agenda because we have to submit all of our questions by hopefully Sunday night, Monday morning, so that you all can answer them. So I opened up your presentation, I'm like 63 pages, holy cow. But by the time I was done, I actually had to write down a compliment that I really felt that, I felt like I was inside of your school, just from looking at your PowerPoint presentation online. So anyway, compliments to all the information you gave us and all the positive things that are happening. and all the positive things that are happening at your school.
I do apologize for the overabundance of slides.
Don't. I like, that's good, actually.
No, it was good.
Next year I shall double it then, sir.
I love, in your next steps in academic achievement, the questions that you posed, like with the, especially how do we respond if they don't know it?
Yes, ma'am.
How do we respond if they do know it? Where did that come from? Collaborating with your teachers and meeting, you know, and how?
Those particular concepts, those four questions are the foundational questions of the professional learning community or the PLC model started by Rick DeForre and Dr. Iker many years ago. Written about in a wonderful book called Professional Learning Communities at Work. I would highly encourage you to check out Adley Stevenson High School in Lincolnshire, Illinois. It is a wonderful learning opportunity. But it is those questions that essentially are at the heart of the learning process. We have to know what we want our children to know. We then have to know if they know it, and then what do we do? We don't want to react. We want to respond to the young ones not gathering it. And so that is when we look into the ideas of the assessments that we are utilizing from iReady, which has been quite helpful this year, and I commend our curriculum office for getting that tool for us. I also commend our curriculum office for being very diligent in their efforts in giving us a lot of MAP data, which is something in my time as principal we haven't always had in as timely a manner, and that's because of the time in which it is given to us. Quite often, we get the results of the MAP data at the middle of the school year. We were able to get it this year, and we were able to do a deep data dive, for lack of a better term, into it. We were able to look at standards and strands and student achievement levels at those, which has been really helpful for us because, as I indicated in my question response to you, I was able to visit the school district of Webster Groves, who have been doing this for quite a while, and to learn from them and utilize their documents. And so we at Rogers have been able to use that to help plan. We've also been able to, as I like to say, triangulate that data from the MAP with iReady as well as with teacher assessments that is taking place on a daily basis to find out where are the gaps and what we need to do to try to fix them.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Good. All right. You're not gonna say anything?
They're amazed. I mean, Rogers is obviously one of my favorite schools too, so you guys are doing great as usual, and I love seeing the numbers. The numbers are fantastic.
Thank you, Mrs. Storm.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Principal Dean. So if you want to take a shot at Dr. Keno, feel free because...
And I was like, wow, that's a hard act to follow, Dr. Keno.
That's why Scott stopped going on the same night that he's here.
Exactly. That is so true. So I am here tonight to tell you the story of Beasley Elementary, and I am honored and proud and excited to be able to have this opportunity. It's impossible for me to be able to just take a few minutes, like Larry was saying, and talk about Beasley because there's so many great things going on at Beasley. You really have to visit the school to see the great school climate and the great culture that we have. One of the things I have up there is our hashtag BeasleyStrong that was started by our PTO last year because no matter what the adversity, what challenge, what we have in front of it, we always face it as a team, and we are BeasleyStrong. This is our mission. We do work together for every child every day. We are always working to create that safe, collaborative, and caring environment with students so they are ready to learn. Our school improvement goals mirror much of the student improvement goals that you probably see in many of the other schools because they are aligned to the district strategic plan as well as aligned to Portrait of a Graduate. So we're working on math, reading, especially focusing on our minority subgroups. We're also working on looking at our 90/90 proportional attendance, student and community engagement, emotional regulation, and of course, always being effective and efficient with our resources. Currently sitting at 329 students at Beasley, including pre-K. Our current enrollment by grade level, so this shows our breakdown, really pretty proportionate across the grade levels. We are one of the smaller schools, as you see, so our kindergarten and 5th grade only have 47 in the grade level. This is our new enrollment this year, so these are students that enrolled at the beginning of the school year. Let's, we have 57 new students that have joined us at Beasley this year. You can see the breakdown. This is our demographics by ethnicity. 33.5% have some ethnicity that they are reporting, and you can see the breakdown there. Again, more of our demographics. We have seen an increase in our homeless population as well as our special education population at Beasley. Free and reduced lunch percentages, we started the year at about 58%. We're currently at 54% after the September recertification date. Building proportional attendance, as you can see, Beasley kind of goes up and down. Proportional attendance is the state target where you want 90% of your students here 90% of the time. And so really and truly, our average daily attendance is much higher than this, but we have some outlying students that we're working on, and we have a lot of things in place like our student encouragement program and other programs that are helping us to try to raise that proportional attendance for our APR. This is our reading services slide, so this is our pull-out remedial reading. This is something that we're very proud of. We have 66 students this year. We had 90 students who qualified last year. All of our students are receiving, that qualify for reading are receiving services. Another point of pride is that we graduated 10 students in December. We did pick up four new students. Sometimes we do have new students that come into our school and qualify, but graduating 10 in the middle of the year is a great accomplishment. This is our NSJRA scores from last year. The first chart shows you the students reading on grade level. The second chart shows on grade level plus a year's growth. So if they're below grade level, they made a year's growth in that. This is our reading data from this year, so you can see our reading levels for each grade level. Kindergarten, we don't report at first quarter because we're not expecting them to be reading, but you can see that we have 87% of our students in kindergarten right now on level. Last year, leaving kindergarten, we only had 50%, so we're already ahead of that. We're attributing a lot of that, of course, to the hard work of our staff, our reading. We have a classroom reading interventions that comes in, our ELL push-in program helps a lot with that. But we also have very low class sizes in kindergarten this year, and that has definitely helped. We have more time to spend with our struggling students. Another thing is that 72% of our students this year attended some type of early childhood program or Melville summer school, and that was really a first at Beasley. This is our iReady math diagnostic results. It's kind of hard to see on the screen. The lighter green, but you can see the percentages there. So that's our fall benchmark, and then our growth to our winter benchmark. And this shows our, again, it's kind of light, but you can, right now, typical growth since we're in the middle of the year would be 50%. And so according to the iReady consultant, Beasley's at 47%, so we're really right on target. And all of our grade levels are on target except for two, 3rd grade and 5th grade. So we are strategically targeting those two grade levels to see what we can do to help the students. Many of them, when we looked, are just right below where they need to be. So being able to give them that extra boost and look at the standards they need help with has greatly helped. Looking at MAP, you can see that this, this graph shows our, the gray bar is Beasley. The other two show the district average and the state average. This is our 3rd grade in ELA and math. Even though Beasley is below the state average and district average, we are making growth each year. Here's our 4th grade proficient and advanced, the same type of data. And our 5th grade percentages of proficient and advanced. Our 5th grade really gets closer or above state averages as well as district average. You can see they're much closer, so the longer we keep a student at Beasley, we're able to work with them, the more they grow and the better they are showing their learning. Science, we only had 2019 scores because 2018 was a pilot year for DUCY MAP testing in science. This is a graph showing comparison schools. So the, Beasley's the first one on the left for, with ELA and math and reading. Comparison schools are chosen based on demographics. So looking at schools that would be similar to Beasley, of course, you never can get a school that's going to be exactly like your school. Every school has different things about it that make it special. But this just shows you that where we are in comparison with schools that would be similar to us, maybe with free and reduced lunch or with other demographic things. 4th grade comparison schools, you notice with 4th grade, we get much closer to some of our comparison schools, like Luft that's doing much better than us, and a lot of times they're the one that's kind of that standout. They're in Independence, Missouri. But you also see how much we are achieving better than other schools that are like us. Same thing with 5th grade, so again, on the left is ELA and on the right is math. This is our cohort analysis, and so looking at this, Beasley, what happens is when we get 3rd graders and they scored, they had their MAP score, and they go to 4th grade, they improve. We have 4th graders. They take the MAP test. They go to 5th grade. They improve. Every year, we're able to show improvement in cohort groups, whether it's ELA or math. Our students are constantly improving and growing. Some highlights of Panorama, you've been hearing about the SEL, the social-emotional learning. Some highlights of Panorama, these are the six topics in Panorama that the students, this is 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students, who are rating themselves in these areas. And the green shows all the growth that Beasley's made in one year. So it's been amazing, the growth that the students have made. This is our students telling us about how they feel about their school with engagement and sense of belonging. Again, great increases. I can tell you that last year when we first did our Panorama, we had a lot of areas of red, which were below national and district percentages. This is another point of pride, so we were at 48% school climate last year when we first started our Panorama, and you can see that trajectory of growth. We're at 76% this year. This was amazing. This was the most growth in the entire Melville school district. Another thing that shows our social-emotional is in 2017, 2018, we saw a great increase in our discipline referrals, and we have been working diligently to correct that and help the students because no student wants to be in trouble or feel bad at school, and we want them in the classroom learning. And you can see for 2019, 2020, we've already greatly reduced that. This also shows discipline data as far as incidents and things that happen that might warrant an office referral, and the difference between first semester last year and first semester this year. Dramatic decrease. As a result, we've had less in-school, out-of-school suspensions, less room clears where we have to have students leave their classroom and they're not able to learn in that same room. We're also, students are able to stay in their classroom. They're able to remain in there and have breaks or interventions in there. We have ZenDens in all of our classrooms, very similar to what Dr. Keno is talking about, and our students are using them. Every morning, we practice on announcements. Our staff, this all goes back to our staff. They're hardworking. They're dedicated. They come up with ideas. They want professional development, and we work on it together, and we do whatever it takes for the kids. And so all of these things are things that we have been working on, and we're seeing what a difference it's making at Beasley. Again, I'd like to be able to spend a lot of time, but these are just some few pictures about our home visits. We're still doing our homeworks program. This is our family dinner. We do parent-teacher learning teams. Everyone's learning. Parents are learning. Students are learning. Teachers are learning. We have a teach-and-reach program where we go to the VA. You met our Jaguar Kids Club, some of them tonight, and we're constantly working with our community to meet all the basic needs of our students. So when they come to school, they don't have to be worried about being hungry or having clean clothes or things like that. So together, we can do anything. We are BeasleyStrong. So I would be happy to elaborate or answer any questions that you might have about any of those things.
I'm interested in, when you talked about the new students coming in, there's an old computer science term called thrashing. It's when you spend more time managing change than actually carrying out your process. Was this a high number for you, the number of new students this year?
No, that's pretty...
So this is, this is a normal rate of kind of...
Pretty normal rate. We've had higher, and we've had a little bit lower, but usually it's 57 and up. And the other thing that happens is, I know a lot of schools will get students kind of at the beginning of the year or maybe in January. We will get students all year long, just randomly throughout the year. So I know we were having a principal meeting, I think in October, and I had just registered 12 kids. So it's just, it just varies. It just depends on when, you know, an apartment complex comes open, people move or things like that, so you just see that mobility rate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I will say, I know in our comparison school that someone had asked, they compare with about 20 to 25 new students this year. When we were looking at John Luft, the one that's doing, that outperforms us on MAP a lot of times, they average about 20 to 25 new students.
Because that's really a measure of almost the level of your community in terms of its maturity, too.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, because you see the results when our kids are at Beasley and stay there. It's amazing, the growth that they make. We had a new student this year in 5th grade, and the students already made two levels of growth in math.
Wow.
Two years. So amazing, as a 5th grader.
Can you code?
You had mentioned 72% attended preschool or the summer school. Why do you think that's grown, and you have any idea? Like, the resources that are available to, you know?
So part of it's opportunity.
Yeah.
We did have several, we had more students from John Kerry Early Childhood this year, so most, more students that came in, maybe with an IEP or had gone to John Kerry. We did have that this year. We had more students attend our summer academy, so that was good. We, that helped a lot, having some transportation to certain areas in our attendance area, definitely with summer academy, and we were able to advertise that at our kindergarten registration and our, we do a kindergarten screening.
Yes.
We advertised that with our parents for the first time, and that greatly helped. Just availability, and we also have, I think we have more parents in this kindergarten group that were working, and it was a necessity.
Right, okay.
Just in talking to them.
That's wonderful. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that.
Definitely.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so you don't have any weight at all for your reading?
No, we do not. And that was, we had three and a half teachers last year, reading specialist, and we didn't have the need for the halftime teacher this year, so it was moved to another school. So that's just with three teachers, we're able to cover all those students. Yeah, it's been amazing. So our students, again, making great growth in reading.
Yeah, that's great, and you have so many staff here, so thank you to all of you for all you...
Yes, this is, this is what I'm talking about. They are... This is why, this and the kids, the staff you work with and the kids that you work with every day, that's why you do it right there, and I couldn't ask for a better staff.
Yeah, and I think the social-emotional learning, I don't know her exact title, and I apologize, has, should take a lot of kudos because...
Absolutely.
Obviously, your numbers have improved tenfold, so...
Absolutely. Having that social-emotional learning intervention is the district one place in our building has been unbelievable because we're actually teaching students. It's not, it's not about the discipline, and we all know that, but taking the time to teach them, okay, what could I have done different next time? Helping them through strategies, teaching them to cope, teaching them to deal with stress. You know, they don't learn that. They know they have stress or they have something that's bothering them, but they don't know how to tell you. So it's been amazing, and she does an amazing job, and she's able to coach and work with the teachers, not just the students. So that has been an amazing resource for our teachers as well. It's been great. And the partnering between Special School District and our staff at Beasley, if you came in, you can't tell the difference between Special School District staff and our staff, and as you can see, they're partnering a club together. You see that all the time with all of our staff and students.
Good. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we're to Health Services Data Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me to talk about the Health Services Department in the district and give you the yearly report for pre-K through 12th grade health services. So as you can see, this is just the last three years, kind of how our staffing has changed, and some of that has been as a result of, you know, nurses retiring or moving on to other opportunities for employment. And so we have increased our, as our HRAs, our healthroom assistants have retired, we've also trying to offset instead of hiring more healthroom assistants, we've hired LPNs to replace those positions, and it's been helpful. Since the economy is so good, we sometimes have difficulty finding nurses to sub. So our healthroom, our part-time, our full-time LPNs are able to be subs throughout the district when we are short a nurse or a nurse has to be out for any reason. Looking at first semester data and the yellow, man, it looks so much better on the screen, but yellow this year numbers... But yellow this year numbers, our first semester visits, which was about eighty-three attendance days with the weather, we had seventy-one thousand seven hundred total visits to the healthrooms across the district. So just putting that simply, that's about eight hundred and fifty-three students visit the healthrooms a day over that timeframe to get to that number. So ten thousand kids, eight hundred and fifty-three visits a day, that's pretty impressive. When we look at just breakdowns, and this is through the first day of school through last Thursday, so August, our January eighth, these are just totals for the individual sites. So on the lower side mosaic, they're averaging about twenty visits a day for the students at, at the Mosaic School. Beasley's around thirty-three. Move up to Trout Wine is around sixty-five visits a day. Get into Bernard, they have about seventy-seven. Washington Middle, forty-five. Melville High School, I told them they won the, the prize for the most visits so far. They're a hundred-four is about what their average visits for students is a day. And then OHS is at sixty-three. So that's just kind of where we are. That's kind of what the flow looks like. I did have an opportunity to ask, I stopped over at Melville High School and asked them and told them, hey, your number's really higher than the rest of the school district. Can you tell me why? And that particular day, there was a sub nurse that is one of our full-time sub nurses, and she works at both Oakville High and Melville High School. And she said, from her perception, being at both schools this semester, that more students come in Melville High School to somewhat check in and just kind of somewhat have that SEL time and that check-in with the nurses. And that's kind of a safe spot for them. So she said that's part of why she thinks, from her perspective, that that number might be a little higher at Melville High School. So that was an interesting point that I really didn't have an answer for until I asked that question. Looking at just the upper respiratory and gastrointestinal reasons that a student may be sent home, those are just the total numbers, again, from first day of school through last Thursday per site. When we look at the equipment that we purchase, maintain throughout the, the course of all of our healthrooms throughout the district, those are just some of the items that we, that we work on. There's a replacement cycle. Marshall's been great about working with me and then Nurse Ahern, who's our lead nurse for the district, to kind of work through that cycle and to, and to five and outward to ten-year replacement cycles. Items on the, on the right side are a lot more expensive. Our defibrillators, probably two to three thousand apiece, and we have a lot of those in the district. Vision boxes are around seventeen hundred apiece when we replace those. And the audio, audiometers are around eleven hundred apiece. And so those are things that we had to put on those replacement cycles just because they're bigger ticket items that we have to maintain and replace. So for fiscal year nineteen twenty, we are at an equipment budget. We asked for around sixteen thousand seven hundred and eight dollars to take care of the equipment needs we have throughout the district. We are estimating that by May, we're going to spend around nineteen thousand two hundred on medical supplies for all of our healthrooms. And then we spend about fifteen hundred on repair, maintenance and calibration costs for the equipment that we have in the district. So moving on to professional learning, so our nurse team meets on the district half-days. And Nurse Ahern helps provide and facilitate our professional development for the nurse team. So our, the lead doctor that we work with, that's our medical advisor for the district, he'd presented on concussion assessments and treatment earlier this year. We have worked on some basic life support recertifications. We put those on cycles, so every two years, the, our ends are on a cycle. The next two years, we take care of our healthroom assistants and then our LPNs so that we can maintain those certifications throughout the district. And then coming up next month, since we're moving from the paper process for online regist- for registration enrollment to the online system, they are going to have some training with Tyler on what, the whole medical documentation, the uploading of documents, how people can upload shot records as well as physicals and such, and how that's going to go into the system and how they can access that. So that's what's coming up soon for them as we make that transition from paper to electronic. Lastly, the nurse team does a great job of staying current on trends. This year, we're spending fifteen of the nurses to professional development between August and the end of this semester, that they have signed up for conferences. Nurse Ahern's very involved in the Missouri level as well as taking care of the regional meetings that she's involved with, with nurses throughout St. Louis County and, and the other two county region. One thing that we did this year that was a little different is we coordinated with Walgreens because in the past, we have subcontracted back our retired nurses to do flu shots and do that through Cigna. This year, Walgreens had an offer for us to where they would maintain all the flu serum. They would take care of all the forms, which are pretty daunting at times, free of charge. They would come to, come on-site, take care of all the sharps, which in the past, we've had to take care of that as well as the disposal. So all those costs, Walgreens completely took care of for us. So we were able to administer seven hundred and thirty-four flu shots for employees or their, or the family members on our insurance onsite when we did our flu shot. And it was zero cost to us this year. So that was a nice piece that we coordinated with Walgreens to offer that service for the district. So I'm really proud of all the work they do. They're a great team. They deal with a lot of things that I wouldn't want to on a daily basis. And they do it with, with a smile and caring and compassion. They're very involved in their buildings, and I think it leads support for teachers, staff, parents, and the district. So really proud of the work they do. And it's just amazing the amount of, of people that we see over the course of a semester in the school district. You guys have any questions or comments?
I think you must have been very thorough.
I have a lot of help. I got a lot of people that do good stuff for me, so. No questions?
Yeah, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Policy revisions. Does anyone presenting on this, or is it just us discussing?
Does anybody want to poll any?
Yeah. I'm not completely comfortable with the one where it gets into the essential oils. And I just don't know, I don't know enough about it. I know, just so everyone knows why I'm doing this, that I've had one parent, so it wasn't like a majority, but one parent who felt this really helped her child in one of our schools and with some stuff that he had. I think there's other people that feel that same way. So I'm just not sure what impact it would have, the way that we have this written up. And I'd like to understand that better before making a call to put it forward. So I'd like to poll, I think it's JHCF.
CD.
CD. JHCD from the-
I think that's a good idea coming, because as I mentioned, I think this could be a slippery slope, no pun intended. You know, with the ease of medical marijuana being available now and where that, you know, where one could easily morph into the other one.
Yeah, there's that concern, too. Right.
Yeah, I think we better tread lightly there for a little bit.
And the one, the one question I had about that, too, is whether we're going to maintain Narcon on-premise in case of an emergency. I think that's, that was the, the one comment I had.
Yeah, it had it in there to do that. Is there a plan for when that would happen?
It's on the policy committee we have to review, make a decision on, and actually research what opportunities are out there, what we would do.
Okay.
I think, I think you should send that to Kelly and her staff. I think they can give us a pretty good read on that.
Yeah. And if they could kind of focus on that portion of it, would appreciate that. Do anyone have anything on the other two?
Maybe we can get Walgreens to donate that.
I had one question, I think it's on DFA. This is the one that I believe has the, looks at the, the state policy in lieu of ours. I was gonna, I'd like to direct a question to Marshall. Have you, did you have a chance to look at that? This is the one on the investment of surplus funds, where it refers back. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, we had, we pulled that, Larry, and then Dr. Gaines had, the policy committee, I should say, pulled that. And then Dr. Gaines had MSBA and Marshall look at it again. Right.
Well, he's got a green tie on, so it's got to be good.
Good news. Okay. Did anyone want to discuss anything with DFA or JHC? In that case, could I get a motion to approve DFA policies, DFA and JHC?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
So could I have the numbers of the one we sent back?
Yeah, it's JHCD.
JHCD, thank you.
JHCD.
Okay, bounce.
No problem.
I have numbers, letters, thank you.
They'll run together after a while. Budget development. Green tie. Good news, right?
I think we should have the green tie.
All right, fiscal year twenty-one budget coming up. So first thing that we'll look at this spring here is the debt portion. So when we look at the debt portion, that's what I'm going to talk about tonight. And currently, this year, we're spending about ten point eight million dollars in cop debt expense. Next year's going to be about the same. It's going to be just under ten point seven million. So pretty much the same. We're estimating that we would levy about forty-five and a quarter cents to put into the cop fund. It's comparable to forty-five cents this year. So it's pretty much the same. And then you'll see in the next year fiscal year twenty-two, all we have left to pay off all the cops is only one point six million dollars. And that year, we won't be levying anything. We'll already have enough money in the fund to pay that off. So that's where we're heading now is, you know, with next year being the last year of using a tax levy to cover the cop fund, that leads into the whole issue of what are we going to do with that eight million dollars? And how do we want to utilize that? So that's, that's how that comes into play. This is an interesting footnote, just to take a brief minute over recent history. I've been here seven years. We've covered a lot of ground in seven years. Note one, you know, reinforces the fact that all the cops would be paid off in April of twenty twenty-two. It talks about the DNR debt, Department of Natural Resources, that was paid off in fiscal year eighteen. We have bus lease paid off in fiscal year eighteen. We had general obligation debt paid off in fiscal year seventeen. St. James Building was paid off in fiscal year seventeen. Turf debt was paid off in fiscal year sixteen. It's been, it's been a very achieving run financially of what the district has been able to do with their debt. This is just a quick snapshot of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. We start the year with twelve million dollars of beginning debt, beginning balance debt. And we would pay off ten point four million dollars. And that leaves us with the one point five million that we pay off in fiscal year twenty-two. And by levying forty-five cents this year, you'll see the highlighted yellow section there. The estimate of next year would be about forty-five and a quarter cents. By doing that, we estimate that our cop fund will pretty much break even with what we need to pay off the debt. So we're not facing any shortfall. That can change a little bit, though, as all of the revenues change before we finalize the budget. Shouldn't change a lot, though. And then this is just a detail of our cop schedules, of the existing cops that we have, the payoff schedule for those four cops. And really, that's pretty much it for tonight. So are there any questions?
No, just keep giving us good news.
I just want to reinforce something you said.
Keep wearing green ties.
Yeah, I just want to reinforce something you said. I remember in twenty fifteen, when I first met you and we were talking about what the debt situation was. We were looking at twenty twenty-nine, I believe, as being when we would have it paid off. And through yourself and the finance committee and our, our bank, it's-
I think mainly through lower interest rates. That was the biggest driver.
Yeah. I mean, it's, people often talk about governments not being responsible with people's tax money. And this, I think, is a perfect example of an area where there has been some real good responsibility and proactive action to pull in, paying off the debt eight years forward. That's, I think that's a pretty big deal. It should be applauded, so it's a good job.
And also on the health insurance.
Right.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is twenty nineteen demographic study report.
Good evening.
Hey.
So thank you for the opportunity to come and follow up with the results of the demographic enrollment study that was approved by the Board of Education in June. There's a lot of information to process. We recently received this. We wanted to be sure that you were able to see it as you had given us the green light to proceed. The study was conducted by Preston Smith. He's the owner, owner and operator of Business Information Systems. And you may recall that Business Information Systems had conducted our previous demographic study in two thousand and seventeen. And he's also conducted studies for comparable districts to Melville, like Park Hill School District. There were numerous data sources that were used in the completion of this study. And I also want to give a word of thanks to Steve and our data and assessment department for working closely with Preston to make sure that he could complete the study in a timely fashion. I think it's important to note that we've seen a reasonable degree of accuracy in the information that Business Information Services has provided to us. If we look at our past three school years, including this school year, we can see that Preston typically hits the mid-range or high-range projections that he had provided for us. And this slide is a visual representation of that accuracy that is kept by district leadership. It also indicates that with our previous projections, there was a steep downward decline in projected enrollment at the time of the study. This is part of a longer pattern of decline in the Melville School District. When graphed, it appears as an inverted U-shaped pattern. This peaked in nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-five, and we had a total enrollment of twelve thousand one hundred and forty-six students. So an examination of the number of Melville School District students who participate in the VIC program also follows this inverted U pattern. The number of students who participate in the VIC program is currently under two hundred students. So it's a variable that we need to monitor closely. And we are currently continuing to accept siblings into that program. I also want to highlight that we do have fairly roughly equitable distribution of grade level sizes throughout the district. This is something that is monitored. And given that we see an increase in our middle school and enrollment sizes, it's okay to say an extra word of thanks to our middle school teachers. District leadership does pay close attention to this information. This is an example of how we track data within Central Office. And with this, we can see that the average of our three most recent years by grade level is less than the long-term average of class sizes since two thousand and nine, with the exception of fifth and sixth grade. So it's natural to question, why are we declining as a school district? And the study presents three reasons why that is happening. One, birth rate is decreasing within the boundaries of the Melville School District. And the second is that our elderly population within the district has increased. The third is the one I find most interesting, and it prompts a lot of thought and conversation. The Melville School District currently captures seventy-six point three percent of the market share of students who live within our attendance boundary. The state average is eighty-six percent. And this report estimates that there are three thousand students who live within our attendance boundaries that do not attend our schools. And the report did identify thirty-four private and parochial schools that we could consider competitors. And students who are enrolled in those schools number eleven thousand and sixty-four. So that's pretty significant. But I do want to end with some really good news. This is pretty fascinating. It's very early to make assumptions about any changes in trend line. But if we look at our previous enrollment projections, and we can see with the purple line to the left, that Preston's numbers were in that mid to high range. There's a break. And then we factor in the new projections, and suddenly- And then we factor in the new projections, and suddenly, the decline in trend line is not as steep. In fact, it offers the potential for leveling off some. And so again, it's too early to make any assumptions. This is going to have to be something that we monitor closely because of the implications that it has on what we do and how to best meet, meet the needs of our students. And so there are some implications here. We first have to recognize, and I'm an old science teacher, there are always variables, right? There are things that we cannot expect. And the further removed you are from something, the harder it is to hit that target. And so there could be schools that close, that could impact us within the district. Also, we want to again continue to monitor the number of families that participate in the VIC program. We've seen a decrease roughly of eight to 10% per year. And again, we are accepting siblings. But we need to watch to see what county districts choose to do in decision-making surrounding VIC. It's my responsibility to share this out with multiple departments. As you, and as you can imagine, there are implications for, for our business office, for communications, for human resources. And today I started making rounds with the building principals because we can see specifically what the projections for their schools are. I was at Hegeman Elementary earlier today. And then also for the facilities, facility steering committee. So as we think about the future facility needs of our buildings, this gives us an idea of that those buildings may be increasing or decreasing in enrollment. And do we have the space and proper facilities to accommodate students within those schools? I cannot stress enough how important it will be for us to promote the US Census. We need an accurate count of the residents, families, folks who are living within this school district. And so you'll see some coordinated efforts through the district to build awareness of that. And the more people we have counted, the better it will be for us as a district. And finally, as approved by the Board of Education, we'll continue to come back to the demographic reporter every three years. And so we anticipate that we'll make a request to have another demographic study completed in 2022 and 2023. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Is kindergarten enrollment looking, how has that been since it's been opened on six?
So it's interesting, and I know that there are steps that are being taken to continue to promote kindergarten enrollment. Our demographer did tell us that that will be one of the indications that would notify us if we're leveling off or even reversing that inverted U-shape. I think with my conversation with Mrs. Durham, the principal of Hegeman today, I think she said that 34 students had enrolled for kindergarten at this time. And she was going to look at historically what that represents. Because of course, there are implications about staffing at different levels. It's still a little bit early to speak for the district. But I will say that the demographer stressed that that is a number that we need to be paying attention to.
I know, because with Mosaic this year, it's amazing how many siblings are coming in kindergarten.
I really think this break that we see in 2018, I mean, that's a noticeable, that's a significant slope difference. If we were statistically looking at that, that's significant. And I don't have any data behind this other than inferential. But as we look at what we've been doing in our district, and we've been seeing improvements, you know, we started the efforts in 2015, and then 2016, and then we started to see the results coming. And MAP scores, ACT scores increasing, Mosaic opening, which is, you know, first of its kind. A lot of people are coming in, a lot of schools are coming in and looking at it. We're starting to be more of a leader in education as opposed to a follower. All of these things are happening at the same time. And when we started that, it was with the goal of being a destination district. It's impossible to say if this is the first sign of that yet, because as they say one point, doesn't make a trend. But hopefully this is, and by continuing to do what we're doing, we'll see this actually come up because schools are a draw for people. And that's one of the reasons why home values go up with good school systems. So I think it's positive what we see here. It's another data point that helps support what we're doing. And then where we go from here, continuing on this momentum.
I think the staff of the Melville School District would appreciate hearing you say that. And I share your confidence that the things that we're trying to do in our schools, as demonstrated tonight by two excellent principals, will speak to the hopes that parents have for their children.
We can also look at the advantage of having quality communication as well. So it's not just about progress, you know, in the communities that we've been offering. However, it's also communicating out in the professionals and work of communications department. That has helped a lot in regards to telling our story and reaching out to new families, respecting kindergarten families, people like that. So it's also in addition to workers' staff.
Yeah, you're right, there's so many things happening on so many levels that are pushing in the same direction. It's a lot of good work you guys are all doing.
I just Googled the VIC program. I was curious if I could find some statistics for, so the VIC program itself, it says here about 4,400 students are currently participate in the program at all, compared to its peak of 14,000. So I mean, I just was curious if there were numbers out there. So that would, it's the whole.
It's a regional discussion.
Right.
Would you repeat the, the number with the 34 private parochial schools? What was the attendance number?
Sure. It was 11,064.
Couple of comments. Is there any way to, that the demographer has any feel for what the pre-K decay retention is? We have kids we have in our pre-K, is that feeding, is that increasing? Number of kids coming into kindergarten?
So that, that was not a part of our conversation with the demographer. But I have had conversation with Sarah Farner, who helps facilitate the kindergarten screening. And she's collaborated with Dr. Smith and others in the curriculum department so that we can start better obtaining some of that information ourselves through our screening process.
I think that's kind of an, kind of, would be kind of a leading indicator that might give us some ideas. And some feedback on early childhood as well. Is there any type of numbers on homeschool? I know those are kind of nebulous to try and track down, how many kids in this area would also fit into that.
You know, not, not evident in this report, and not that I recall.
It's tough to track.
Yeah, I will tell you anecdotally, as an elementary school principal, we did receive families who had homeschooled their children. And often, just opening the door and showing them what was possible was enough to prompt that enrollment.
And was there any feeling during the discussion that the recession we went through, this is, that was kind of a lagging indicator that we may see accelerated home turnover and younger families?
No, so that was really interesting. Because there doesn't seem to be a correlation between the economy and what our enrollment is.
Okay.
The same thing, that was something that we had anticipated and expected. And then meeting the other board, I don't know if you can pull that out very clearly, that, that is not what followed the data.
Okay, okay.
You know, many of us had lived through the Great Recession, and we were mindful of how that impacted our families. I think it didn't impact the numbers of those families so much.
So really what this kind of comes down to is, of that 24% of the market share that we don't have because of the job we're doing, and what Kevin was talking about with what the indicators and what the direction shows, that we, actually, that's probably the greatest opportunity for increase in people moving into the area.
I agree.
We're all going to have that, um, going out there too, for their education. And that is a, you know, choice that sometimes, not, you know, that someone's choosing a better education because they don't believe in the quality of schools.
Yeah, yeah.
So what, what did you say that number translated into students, Dr.?
Which number?
The ones that are, that the market share we don't have.
So we, yeah, roughly 24%.
11,000 students.
That was a lot.
That's more than.
No, no, the 11,000 students who are enrolled in parochial schools in this region, private and parochial schools within the region.
Which doesn't mean that certain living is.
3,000, 3,000 students live within our boundaries.
That's, that's.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is better than the 40% we used to play with.
And again, I'm optimistic that steps we're taking to listen to the community, to engage them through thought exchange, board listening sessions, et cetera, and help shape the renewal of the strategic plan will result in things that appeal to families.
I think so too. It's concrete steps that are being taken, that perceptions are beginning to improve about the district and the schools. And those perceptions are what people are going to base their decisions off of. Anything else?
Were you going to cover the 115-page report now?
Please no.
If I can get Dr. Kenoi to help me, then I would be honored to do.
Narrated by.
I'm waiting for the coloring book to come out, I think that'll be more fun.
There's a lot to unpack. This is going to be part of our conversations going forward for a while, both at the district and at the building levels.
I thumbed through it, I haven't had a chance to read it, but it's, it's really nice the way they broke it up, especially with the graphics, to kind of give you a nice, a nice almost template that gives you an idea of each individual, it's well done.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. It is time for our local Baldrige update. These aren't going to end anytime soon, are they? I like these.
We're just beginning, and we're just restarting after 18 months. So we're going deeper this year. All right, so as a reminder, each month where we come up to just provide more of a first round list, more of basic times. And so we are getting a chance to take a really deep dive. And so we will actually only talk about one topic tonight, and that's vision and value statements. As we really dig into the leadership, that's one of the pieces of the criteria, is vision and value. And so a cheesy way to be able to put a plug in is to take the 2020 vision and say that we're going to start coming in focus a little bit. And specifically, we wanted to address, there are five questions to consider as part of category one, and that's leadership. And so you can see the five questions that are here. Only the one that is highlighted will be actually what we try to tap into in the next few minutes. So how do we set the organization's vision and values?
So we took the mission statement that we have for the district, as well as the, the integration of Portrait of Graduate as, as a beginning steps of knowing that we have that in place. And one part that we are working on is those vision and value statements as a result of how we're going to support and implement our mission.
So one of the things we felt that was important to be able to do is define what a vision statement is and what a value proposition would be. Because I think having an explanation of what you're supposed to achieve out of a vision statement and a value statement, it requires a definition. And so you can see, what we think we know is a vision statement, or what we think we know is a value statement, is more kind of a check here to see, is indeed what we have in some of our sites? Because we'll do a quick analysis here in just a moment about what sites have a mission statement, what sites have a vision statement, and what sites have a value statement. And the answer is, we're kind of all over the place. And some of the value statements that are there, some are stronger than others. Some of the vision statements that are there may not always be a vision statement. They may not necessarily meet that criteria that you would be looking at, about that public declaration to, you know, to really establish the high-level goals. So we will, we'll tackle that in just a moment though.
So just expand a little bit on more of what Brian said. You know, the Portrait of Graduate really has allowed us to embrace that, the mission, and really integrate that K through 12 throughout the system. And schools all have a mission statement when we look at websites, when we look at their school improvement plans. But we, we did realize and recognize that the vision statements or the value propositions were, were generally, if, if they're known, they're only known to maybe the school community, to maybe the staff. It's not something that's outwardly expressed and understood. And that at the value, at the value position statement at the school level was probably lacking. And we haven't really discussed that as a, as a moving forward moment yet.
So the next few slides are just some examples of these vision and/or value statements. At least that's what's described on our website, says the communications department helped us do a bit of a dive into this particular one. So you can see examples from Melville, Early Childhood, Mosaic, and Point. You can also see then some differences between the elementary and the middle. So you can start to see, you know, longer, more elaborate, some of them, not all of them. And they're all written well. It, it's not an issue of whether or not we have written things we don't believe. It's just simply a question of, is it meeting the criteria that we're really looking for? Again, this, this is a whole deeper dive into things. So we are looking at it with a much more critical lens than what we did the first time with you. And that was, let's introduce you to the criteria. Well, now that we've introduced you to the criteria, let's start looking really deep at whether or not this is indeed the case. And so also see here are the next couple of middle schools. You can see an example of our middle school cabinet. As we, and that's an example of a mission statement that's there. And you see our two high schools. So there's a little bit of everything that's in, in that particular, you know, in that range of vision and value, and sometimes only mission statements that are there. So one of the things that we also will use as a reference point moving forward are the concepts of approach, deployment, learning, and integration, ADLE. And that's a Baldrige term, it's an acronym that will stand for what I just indicated. So for, when we do a dive into this, one of the things that we would say is we're trying to do a reflection and a, an overall analysis of where are we at? So in our thoughts and understandings of the criteria, where we would indicate that we're at right now, is it an approach level? We have methods, they're appropriate, they are generally effective. We can repeat those, we know that those are things that are important. But when you look at the next thing in terms of consistent deployment, what we know right now is that not all schools have a vision statement, not all schools have a value statement. So we can't say that we've effectively deployed something if not all schools have something.
And we haven't created a common definition until this report of what those two are looking for, for the district.
That is correct. So one of the things we feel that this, these deeper dives will do is essentially create an action plan for us to be able to do at the district level, and to be able to help our principals and our directors in the process of being able to establish a vision and a value, and just a reflection. We have, we have schools like Beerbomb who are going to go back through their mission statement and start that work, and go from the mission into the vision. And then also work alongside in establishing what values are. Because from a school leader's perspective, when, not only can you say a mission statement or a vision statement, but when you know what you value and you know what you believe, those are the foundational pieces for strong leadership and for buy-in at the school level. You know what you stand for, which is really what a vision statement and a value statement is intended to be. That way, there's very little question as to when someone does something, is this something that we value? And you want your values to be reflective. So you can see, we'll work with our communications department on branding. We'll work with our schools in terms of creating appropriate vision statements and/or value statements as appropriate. Some schools have them, all schools could probably say, do we, are we as effective as what we could be? At least with that, and again, this is one that's just kind of a, yes, we have it, no, we don't. Yes, we'll work on it. There'll, there will be other examples in leadership, and then into strategic planning, and then into the other pieces that will be more, it's not a yes or a no, it's we have action plans, we need to keep working on some things. So we're going to highlight more of our gaps in these processes, hopefully some successes as well. But we'll probably find that we'll have a lot of gaps to bring to you over the next, however long that this is going to take. It may take a while.
That will lead to action planning.
That will lead to action planning, that where that's, the whole idea is to help your organization get better. That's all we have. Do you have any questions?
That's it?
That's it.
That was good.
Well, we could have done a deeper dive into all of the pieces of category one, and we'd have been here until 10 o'clock.
Yeah, we, we started with 21 slides, and then Chad pulled us back last week.
Oh, thank you, Chad.
Aw, thank you Chad.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright, we are up to our book club. What School Could Be Chapter Eight. We're just getting started. Who wants to start?
Okay, I'll start. Most of what I read in this chapter, I had already read in other sources. Specifically, what he talked about with what went on in Louisiana after the hurricane, what went on in Tennessee in terms of their value-added matrix, and some other, some of the other states. He has a firm grasp of the obvious, but I, I didn't feel like he really made connections with what does this mean to changing the process? That, that was kind of my assessment of the whole thing. I, and I'll tell you, I didn't like the covered wagon analogy because...
You did, or didn't?
I did not, because the cu- the covered wagon, when people, that, that was a tough gig. They had to be innovative, they had to survive, and they had to work hard. It wasn't an issue of speed, it was an issue of, of, it was the only way they could do it. If he would've talked about this in terms of, you know, yeah, you could go ahead and take the bicycle, but you've got mass transit. There are better ways to accomplish the same ends. He didn't make that connection. I, I just, being a farmer, it kind of bothered.
From Iowa?
Yep. No, I didn't come to Iowa in a covered wagon. Let's not go there. But, but it, it seemed like almost too simplistic. The points he made about, you wanna, you wanna let, basically let students progress, let them grow, not just kind of inchworm along, you know? When he got to that, it made sense, but I, I didn't, didn't buy the covered wagon at all.
He has a quote in here, I'm gonna mess it up a little bit, but he says, "For every complicated question, there is a simple, easy, wrong answer." And I actually like that, but at the same time, I'm like you though, I, he's losing me because I think at times he takes shortcuts. I think there's a lot of complication in education, especially when we look at it across the board. And I think he kind of takes an easy way out. He gets into the, he always goes after the teaching to the test thing. And I got a chance to do some work with my company's training department, and what I learned is that the, the standards that they use are, they start with, what do we have to teach our people? So let's just say, we need to teach our operators how to run machine acts. Well, that means we need to teach them how to start it up, we need to teach them how to change it over, and we need to teach them how to clean it. And, okay, so we got those things. So those are the standards. Then we gotta figure out, how are we gonna train that? Well, that's wide open. That could be PowerPoints, death by PowerPoint, that could be reading, that could be going out to the machine and doing things, all sorts of things under the sun. And then there's always testing at the end to figure out, did they learn it or not? And the testing shouldn't be, we're gonna beat on somebody. The testing should be, hey, if they didn't learn it, then what did we not do right, or what should we do better? He always goes after that thing of beating on the test, and I think he misses that the test is kind of an essential data point, because then he also always criticizes calculus. He hates calculus apparently. But he loves statistics. But if you go to Google and look up, is calculus part of statistics, the answer is yes, which I knew before I asked Siri, but, I mean, it actually is. So his concept, he kind of misses that. And that's where he loses me. He misses some of the details. He draws some inferences that aren't real, they aren't actually accurate. So I think he misses the deeper complexity of what's happening in some of these things. And tries to come up with an easy answer that teaching of the test is bad. Okay, we'd all say teaching of the test is bad, but, you know, let's look back to the other parts of that where we have control and where we can improve these things, which I think is a district, actually, we've been doing.
Yeah, you can tie, take that one step further. What he, when he talked about calculus, he was talking about exit strategies. Exit strategies for what you probably did, toward the tail end of your cur-, your educational career, at least, elementary, high school. If he would've turned that and said, now, what does the, what do we need in terms of entry strategies? What do we need for kids when they first come into school? What are the basics we build? What are the freedoms we give them to let them prosper? Where calculus becomes just another subject when they get to that level, it doesn't become this holy grail, so to speak. I thought he missed that. I thought it was a great opportunity to tie a lot of his material together. If he would've done that. But he, I didn't see it. Maybe, maybe you did, but I didn't see any real emphasis on what do I do to change the process? Just like, oh, the absolute test is bad. That, that was, that's kind of been a recurring theme.
Right. There's a lot that points to what's not working, or what's wrong, and what's bad, and he keeps, you know, emphasizing that point chapter after chapter, and kind of going back, like you said, to standardized testing or whatever, and it's becoming more clear that his point of view, and maybe perhaps agenda on where he sees things is his endpoint, and so he's trying to tie anything else into that, you know, it's, it's, you know what I'm saying? Like, he already came up with his.
He's got the conclusion, and he's looking for a premise to lead to.
Yeah, so all the data now is being pulled and only look, looked at from that point of view, that, so it fits his conclusion. And we're probab-, yeah, and we're, I think that's what you guys are saying. So you're noticing the gaps in, okay, well, wait a second. Yeah, there's some good points here, but it's not.
This is like reading a James Mitchin novel, where he does six hundred pages of explaining the sand in the desert and jumps all over the place. And you get to the last chapter, oh, this is how it all ties together.
Yeah.
That's kind of, this is what this reminds me.
Well, I thought the, I did, I, in full disclosure, I did not read the whole chapter. But since you guys have started discussing, I found something that really intrigued me. I'm, I'm gonna read it, if it's okay with y'all.
Sure.
A number of people I met this year would tell me often in a whisper that our schools of education aren't attracting the best students. And I would respond, how do you know? They'd say, well, the average test scores for education majors are low. To which I'd say, when you think of outstanding teachers you've had, what were their strengths? People cite empathy, bringing a subject to life, being a great role model, providing helpful feedback, asking thought-provoking questions, making learning fun, helping them believe in their potential. And to date, not one person has said high standardized test scores.
Right.
Now, if state legislators think test scores are so important, they should release their own.
I like that one.
If we want the best and brightest teaching our children, we shouldn't settle for any less in the state house. Good point.
He makes some good points.
That's, yeah, no, it's, there's nothing better than taking a class from a teacher who just absolutely loves what they're teaching, as opposed to just teaching it because it's what they teach. It's, it's amazing what a difference it makes, you know, and, and what you can take from it, and the excitement that you have, and probably how long you remember what you've learned.
Jump in.
Yep.
Okay, so, on the board, it's actually one of the quotes that I highlighted. It says, "Everyone involved in education has the best of intentions." Kind of exactly what you just said, that every teacher always has the best intention to teach the students, not just, oh, well, I guess they gotta learn how to add today. You don't go into education just because you wanna get paid the big bucks, right?
Well, I can have some like that, but there was a, in the minority. There were some like that, that were getting a paycheck, okay? But I, I, I think that we are very fortunate, particularly here, to have the type of staff that we have at all of our schools, that seem to each have something individual to share with their students.
Yeah.
That you can't teach.
I agree with that. A lot of our presentations, that, well, this whole school year has been about social and emotional learning, and how we've been able to make great strides in that. And I think that's a lot of what we're coming from, is that's, the teacher's attention is just the student as a whole, not necessarily their test scores, which is exactly what's represented throughout this whole book.
That's absolutely right.
Yeah, and that's a valid point.
Yeah.
The quote that I saw this week with, not even relevant to the book, but was, somehow we have to change the mindset of the reward of learning being a grade when it should be the knowledge.
That's right.
Say that again.
Somehow we have to change the mindset of the reward of learning being a grade when it should be the knowledge. And that was, I was kind of looking at standard-based.
Well, we're headed that way. You know, it's just.
When you say, when you say, we, our district is headed that way.
Our district is headed that way. I think, I believe that, you know, it's public perception that may have to be brought into the picture more fully, you know, to understand how much better that works for both students and, and, you know, the, today's scholars in general.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I, I disagree with that a little bit. I don't think that it's necessarily like, like, obviously, it's a public perspective, but like, being in school, if there wasn't a grade, I don't think I would really have a motivation to be learning. I'd be like, okay, I could go take a nap, you know? I don't, I don't, I am motivated by my grades because my grades get me somewhere. And I don't think necessarily, knowing the knowledge is what's important, but.
No, it won't be the grade. It'll be what you learned while you were getting that grade.
But they won't work to get that grade to learn enough without the grade.
So the grade can be a reward. I think what you're getting to is that people are individuals, and they have different motivations, intrinsic motivators. Sometimes that intrinsic motivator is getting the extrinsic reward, the great point back.
So the grade is your payoff.
I guess, yeah, and it's, it's not to say that when I get a B, that means I know less than everybody else in the class that got an A, but I don't think I put enough time and effort into everything that I do if I knew that I.
You, like, and this particular statement was with regards to standard-based grading, where people don't fully understand the purpose of standard-based grading, which is to evaluate a child on, at each level, at each, oh, I don't know what word I wanna use, but, and, and people are.
Each fraction, each fraction of the learning, you know, everything that goes together.
And so, just basically, teaching people that they have the knowledge, even if they don't have their A yet. You know what I mean?
Right.
Instead of looking at the grade as a whole, it's, it's fractioned off into sections.
It, it kind of, almost kind of complements what you've just said, which is, if you get a B, it doesn't necessarily mean you learned less than the people who got an A. It might mean more the time and energy you put into the other parts of it. I feel like that's, right? I mean.
Yeah. Let's say a subject is A, B, C, and D, and you're doing A in all of it except C, and you're just a little less sure of yourself in that particular portion of the learning. So it's, in standards-based learning, that might be then a three, where another child had a three because of a different area that they're not quite as certain of, you know? But it doesn't, you know, it's just, it's gonna be difficult to make a transition in the minds of students and educators and parents and communities, that that's not what it should be about. It should be about the learning.
If this were a book report, and I were a teacher, I would tell Ted, to go back to that chapter where we all kind of started to differ with him a little bit, where, when we got into the challenges that students face, either from poverty or background, or all of these other things. Because that really gets to the individuality of people. And I would almost tell him to research that harder, and rewrite that chapter, and then continue with the rest of it, because I think it brings in your point, brings in, I think, all of us kind of disagreed with that, that that wasn't in-depth enough, that he didn't really look at what had to be done there. He kind of generalized it where.
And blazed over.
Yeah, whereas, different people have different requirements. That's that whole equity thing that we talk about, where certain kids have got the resources, they're able to get things quickly. Other kids need more help. It's more, it's gotta be more individualized in order to really make it equal.
Right.
But it, he kind of glossed over that, and that's, since that point, I've never quite been able to, to get back with him.
I think even to what she was saying is that, there's even, as adults, even though we may not specifically be in an educational setting learning, there's always a reward for what we are learning. For us as adults, it's our paychecks. The more I learn, the more my paycheck is, the better that is. For her, it's the grade, it's that reward. What is the reward for what I'm actually learning? And that's that motivation that you have to try to find, and for some, it is that grade. And I don't know that we will ever be able to change the mindset that what you're learning is your reward.
Right, right, yeah.
Because until you can take it and actually apply it, there's not really a sense of, okay, I know this, but now what do I do with it?
But then that gets into part of what school could be as well, like with Mosaic, how that does get more into actually doing the work, seeing it, getting the results from it, which is, for me, that would be the exact type of environment I would love. I mean, that's some of the stuff that I do on Saturdays when my whole family is sleeping in in the morning, where I'm working on stuff, because there's this thing in my head that likes to do some of those things, and I don't know why. I'm weird.
Well, a lot of it for Mosaic is being able to get out and use that knowledge. So, you know, for them, they're, they're standard-based grading. They get excited when they get a three. My girls, if they get a two, are not happy, but, you know, a one, two, or three is just like an A, B, C, or D. It's, you're going to get that same motivation from them, whether you're using standard-based grading or not. It's just a better tool, I think, especially younger, because it breaks it down more, especially for parents. But it is also the motivation of, I'm trying to get my grade from a two to a three, or I'm trying to get my grade from a C to an A. I think it's the same thing, so.
Something you said kind of triggered a conversation to have. My sister teaches early childhood professionals. And she made a comment a couple weeks ago, that one of the issues they continue to run into, kids in early childhood are sedog on curious, it's almost scary. But by the time we get them into middle school, we've cured them of that.
Yeah.
And, and her, her comment was, what schools should do is to foster that curiosity. And, and, and great, and quite frankly, grades are a barrier to that.
Yeah, they are.
If, if, if that, if that's the absolute, if, if there isn't some measure of the success of being able to do it, whether it's a Kagan approach, or whether it's a pure, pure approach, where you can kind of sit down and help each other, and reinforce, and, and solve, solve problems with it.
Exactly, Larry, because a student is not gonna go, well, what would happen if I did this? You know, well, they're not gonna risk it, because it could affect their grade negatively.
Well, and I have a question for Mrs. Dean, if she doesn't mind, since she's still here. One of the questions I had for you was, what is, I mean, what do you think is causing all this extra? It seems like more anxiety, every year, kids are more anxious and more, I mean, is it grades? Is it social media? Is it, you know, I mean.
Oh, I think it's a combination of a lot of things. Don't be a man of it.
I would agree, it's definitely a combination. But I was just making a statement that Mrs. Aubrey Chant, your teacher's kindergarten, just said almost the same thing Larry just said in one of our team meetings this week, because our kids have that curiosity, we're trying to build, build upon that. And sometimes, some of the kids aren't ready in kindergarten developmentally, or maybe they're not even ready in our grade for some of the things we're going at them, and trying to show them. And giving them that time, you know, so they can develop in their kind of, you know, at their pace.
Right.
Definitely, social media is a factor, I feel like. Even social media taking our time away from things as a family.
Right.
You definitely see it as a factor. Students don't have the same language development, I think because of some of the social media and just video games and things like that as well. So teaching them how to work together in a project, appear in those social skills, and that's why we're teaching so much where they're not getting a natural different leg.
Totally, everybody's saying notes, but his comments, it's a problem. Whatever that learning looks like is different, and, you know, and every student is motivated by something different. From every adult, I know.
Yeah, everybody has a different payoff.
By something different.
Yeah.
Or maybe it may be different, or maybe cheaper. The school system, that, you know, the word up there is a great stable, because I don't know if I'm saying it right.
I have to connect.
Do we have an English teacher?
Do we have an English teacher?
Which is basically the treatment, means these words are a good system that sometimes students are placed in, the school system, where students that are suffering from trauma, or students that do come from poverty, or students that, from either end, are placed in the system that we created.
Yeah.
And they're not getting in that box, your box, like, you know?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The box that's made for the middle student.
Okay, right.
Okay, let's talk about chapter eight.
I'm trying to read about some better things in chat.
Yes, definitely.
I don't know what it's all about.
When I read chapter eight, I thought it was section...
I am excited for closed sessions, so I would like to make a recommendation.
Okay.
Are we good?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading...
There were no comments, so...
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meeting and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri revised statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022, subsections 1 through 6, preparation for negotiations with employee groups, statute 610.021-9, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applications for employment, statute 610.021-13. Tori?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
All right. We're in closed session. Thanks.